Since this is not a hearing, we're going to go ahead and just move on to a public comment as to whether Mason County should consider amending the land use zoning to expand where solid waste and recycling facilities could be located. Before we even begin with that, this has come up because of an organization, a company that wanted to open up a solid waste facility in a place where they were doing recycling. And it was found that it could not be done in that zone. In order for it to be done, it would have to go through a comprehensive plan update and then we would have to go through rezone if that was to even all occur. Currently, there is no zone in that Shelton urban growth area to allow for any type of solid waste. With that being said, I would like to make clear to everybody that Wilson Recycling, if you're going to go up and speak about that, Mason County never closed Wilson Recycling. That was never a part of anything that happened there. Mason County just said they could not turn it into a garbage facility. They were allowed to continue doing recycling. What ends up closing them is the idea that this commodity, and yes, recycling is a commodity, used to have very high value. I was explaining to the commission that I had a friend that used to buy cars at $600. He was a hole caller, and he'd make $1,000 off of those cars when he'd strip them down. And he'd hold on to the commodities till the price was right and then sell them out. Now, the same person buys them for about $100 a car, and he only makes about $100 or $200 a car. The whole industry has shifted, and that's one of the greatest problems and why they needed to change their mode of doing business. But that does not give us the right at any time to skirt the law and just say you can open business there and not have hearings with the neighbors that live behind it or have the things that are legally required by law for us to do, such as public hearings in regards to zoning and comprehensive plan. And with that, Commissioner Jeffries was hoping that we could have a discussion about whether or not we even want to consider having a zone put into any of these areas that would allow for that. That discussion occurred years before we were ever here, and they specifically did not want it there. That's why there's no zone. They specifically requested that it be taken out and not be nothing there. So with that being said, I did that as an introduction. Would you like to?
No, I think that you did a really good job. And I just also want to reiterate that there has to be public process around allowing a new use in a zone. And that public process is what we're doing tonight, a piece of it. And I wish that there would have been time to do this before he opened his business. I wish there would have been some proactive activity to have taken this up prior to him accepting the garbage. But this is the best we could do to try to fix the situation. But the truth is, I have had comment from people that live around the area that have asked me, "Don't allow this in my neighborhood. I do not want to live next to a garbage dump." So that's part of the reason we have public process around allowed uses in our land use zones.
I would just make a comment, Mr. Chairman, that the county has a constitutional, statutory, and regulatory responsibility for solid waste. And in all my tenure as a county commissioner, we've operated the county as a municipal landfill, municipal landfill. It changed, of course, from a landfill. We don't deposit our own garbage now. It's transported by truck to Chehalis, put on a train, goes to a large landfill in Clickatatt County where it is turned into energy. Methane gas is extracted and put on the BPA Bonfire Power Administration lines, and we get it back. So it's been a very efficient method of disposal. But when you're in that regulatory and duty that we have for disposal of solid waste, there's certain things that Department of Ecology and state require us to do. So, for example, we have to take hazardous waste, and we have to do that in a very prescribed manner. We have to take paint. We have to take a lot of batteries, for example, oil. And because we do that, that raises the rate somewhat for all the people that deposit their garbage in Shelton and Union, Beltray, or Hootsport. So if you were allowed, if you, the citizens, me, you, everybody was allowed to have a landfill or collect garbage, it would be very different because it would be a lot of price competition as well as no responsibility to provide those other services. So it's a, in my mind, a function of government, just like transportation, your electric power. It very much fits into that mode and model, and there's a lot of state regulations that we have to follow in providing a service. Thank you.
Now, we'll give you an opportunity to come up with your opinions on this. And I thought long and hard before even saying this, but, you know, it's real easy for people to recommend that garbage go in a location. It's a little harder when you recommend that it go next to your house. And so I ask you to keep that in mind when you make these decisions or you make these comments. And if you're willing to have it put by your home, please let us know your location if we decide to zone it so that we'll know we'll have, and I'm not saying it's a threat, so that we know we have willing people next to it. Because the willingness is important. It's an important aspect. When you have rats and you have smell and stuff like that, that does interfere with definitely a quality of life for a neighbor. So, but we can all choose to live that way, and that's okay. With that being said, this is an opportunity for you to please come up and tell us your, yes?
Do you want me to get the sign-in sheet?
Do we have one? Okay.
We could start with that.
You want me to get it right?
Could you?
Yeah. This will be like the second time we've used the sign-in sheet in two and a half years that I've done.
Oh, we didn't say why. That's why they wanted to. Maybe that won't work.
Okay. Yeah, we have a couple of different things on our agenda today, and we don't know which ones are which, so we're just going to go ahead and wing it and start with the very first part. In regards to this issue of whether or not to, whether you think the county should consider creating a zone inside the Shelton urban growth area that's outside the city, because right now it mirrors their plans and their codes. This is your opportunity to speak. So is there anybody who would like to speak? We'll say, we'll start with against first. Anybody who would like to speak against having these zoning opportunities in the Shelton UGA? Is there anybody who would like to speak? Oh, please, no. Go ahead. Please come up, say your name. And the one thing I do ask, there is no right or wrong or bad. This is opinions that people have. If you have an issue and if you get angry, please look at me. Direct all your comments to me. Get mad at me. That is my role. Don't get mad at each other. Nobody in the audience is expected to ever treat anybody with disrespect, and we won't tolerate from here or there. So please, I'm your huckleberry. Pick me if there's an issue. Please say your name and, if you don't mind, where you're from.
Okay. Hold on. Let someone get one thing out. Okay. Hi, my name is Terry Thompson. I'm at 201 East Paintbrush Lane, Union, Washington. As a member of an active community group about cars, critical offer recharge areas, approximately two and a half years ago, we started a study of going and doing research on different businesses that are permitted upon a car, because we wanted to see what the county's process was, what considerations they were taking, and that sort of thing. So in June of 2013, I got all the information of Wilson Recycling from the Community Development Office and made copies of it. And what I do when I do my research like that is I put it in chronological order because it's the only way that I can put together a story of really what's happening and in what order. When the staff report came up, when this came out, that there was a decision that was going to be made, I noticed in it that there was a 2012 SEPA permit that was not in the information that I had received. So I then asked the Department of Health for the information that they had, because I then appeared that I only got the information from Community Development. And so in that, I put all of the information together and in chronological order. This is my notebook that I have right here. And I went before the hearing examiner with the notebook and handed it in along with a picture board. And the picture board was the two Department of Ecology inspections and the reports and all the pictures that were taken. And I didn't have, I have them with me, the pictures. I didn't have access to making new copies, so if you guys don't have them or would like, or actually if you want a copy of my whole notebook, the Community Development Office made a copy of my whole notebook before they gave it back to me. So you are privy to everything that's in it. But in these two, the pictures are in there, so you can see the conditions of what was going on at Wilson Recycling. So what I, I'm kind of not, I wrote everything up here today, and I'm not reading it like I should be exactly. I will start in a minute, but I just wanted to say that the whole process here has been a train wreck because the very first document that I have in my notebook was a wetland delineation report. In that wetland delineation report, which happened in, I'm just going to find where I should be here. Okay. In 2005, he was required to hire a consultant to complete a wetland delineation report, and the results were that it was a Class II wetland that occurred at the lowest point of general landscape topography. The wetland functions as the headwaters of a small tributary to Johns Creek and is supported by high water tables and surface runoff. This could be the nexus referring to in a Clean Water Act. That's basically how they determine that when it gets contaminated. In July 2006, there was a completed SEPA checklist. The name of the proposed project was Brockdale Storage. Do you have plans for expansion or any related? And they said it was a self-service storage facility. If asked, lift any environmental information that's been prepared or will be prepared directly related? They said none. Remember that the wetland delineation report would have taken care, under the water category, they asked if there was any surface or water body in or near the vicinity and to describe name and state wet stream or river that it flows into. And apparently on the far right of the document, Community Development folks wrote the word wetlands because they left it blank, and it was in a different type of writing. They stated, "No, if the work has to be within 200 feet of the water's attached plan." Again, someone else on the far row wrote, "Yes." And does proposal involve any discharge of waste material to surface waters? Describe the type. They said, "No." Could waste material enter groundwater or surface water? Describe. "No." It goes on and on with incorrect and insufficient information. Remember, at this point, this facility is a self-storage facility, so it was not anything to do with a solid waste facility. Two years later, Mr. Wilson was notified, and at this point it's Brad, his dad, was notified that this was a site for a critical offer recharge area and that it had to be put into the title. Again, this notice stated the subject of this development proposal was for a commercial S1 and F1 storage facility. Three months later, November 2008, Mason County Health issued a notice and order to correct violations for solid waste violations. They were told to stop dumping and accepting scrap metal and construction debris, and they must meet permit exemption requirements. This is the first example that Wilson had moved ahead without a solid waste permit to go from a stage facility. I did this typing really fast tonight, so I'm sorry. A storage facility, thank you, to a solid waste facility. Did they even consider that there may be different citing requirements? A week later, they filed a notice of intent to recycle material recovery. Notice that this document from Ecology says that the taking of metals, that no automobile waste, no automobiles. That's what it said in their document. This document in 2008 told them that they would have to meet all performance standards according to state law that includes design, construction, operation, and closure that does not pose threat to human health or the environment. At this point, Wilson was moving ahead, this storage, self-service storage facility on its way to becoming a solid waste facility. There was never a mention of neighbors or neighboring wells. Throughout the whole book until the staff report, was there no information regarding contact or any questions or anything on the SEPA or anything else? I am personal, I grew up in that neighborhood and know all the people that lived down that lane personally. I have contacted them early on, and the closest well is right next to the wetland that's there, and it's only 54 feet deep. There is eight to nine wells in that vicinity. That family has lived there probably 60 to 70 years. Nine months after the Health Department, Rose Swire noted that in inspection, there was an incidental waste on the ground and responded to remove parts from hulk vehicles and remove the remainder. Remember that nine months earlier, Ecology said, "No automobile waste, no automobiles." A year later, in 2010, Mr. Wilson submitted an environmental permit application to take automobile parts and dry automobile parts drained. And before that was completed, Mason County Health had Wilson renew their conditionally exempt solid waste facility permit. At this point, the only consideration to the car is had been by adding it to the title. By March 2011, they applied for their first industrial store water permit from the State Department of Ecology. They asked on it if there was a SEPA. They said, "Yes." What year? 2006. They used the SEPA checklist, then for its use as a storage facility, not as a solid waste facility. It appears that everyone was making errors, and the runaway train was only generating more speed. All this missing and inaccurate information regarding both water and waste is critically, is critical, especially since solid waste handling can definitely pose a threat to human health and the environment. There was supposed to be a leachate system that was, to this day, never fully completed. By 2011, Community Development noted a properly dumped vehicles. They noted that they approved a Mason County environmental permit to take on vehicle scrap processing and may need to revoke it. They realized there was no charge, no change of use application submitted. The department did not review the proposal per its regulations noting the proposed use over a critical offer recharge area. Also, it was noted they issued the environmental permit because it appeared that scrap processing was not allowed prohibiting, prohibited atop a car. It was delivered, that it was delivered, that Mr. Baker, that's probably not right, previously with Mason County would lose his job, oh, it was stated in there, would lose his job with Wilson, with Wilson if he did not acquire permission for the scrap processing auto wrecking. They issued the permit for Wilson to do auto scrap processing within a car. Then the wordsmithing began, and they said with a new SEPA would not be needed for auto wrecking, but if it was auto, or scrap processing. They signed a change of tenant application, which Wilson was the applicant, and auto wrecking and intermediate solid waste handling as the proposed use. Meanwhile, the car section of the Mason County Comp Plan was being violated. Outdoor auto wrecking is prohibited atop a car, according to the Mason County Comp Plan. At the end of 2011, Wilson filed with Ecology as a material recovery facility. Community Development then decided a change of use should not be required, so it was canceled. They told the Mason County Health Department that they will not be responsible for the SEPA review. This saga goes on and on, but I must stress several other events. In 2012, Mason County Health completed a new SEPA checklist. They did it without public input. They completed it very inadequately and probably would have required an EIS. On this new SEPA, all water-related questions said, "NI," and that didn't come out, "NI." These answers were negligent and threatened the shovel-drinking water wells on Hitham Lane, some only 54 feet. I don't know. My typing's really bad, not even the, okay, so I'm, okay. So right now, there's a huge pile of tires and a big pile of batteries, and batteries was an issue that Ecology already talked about because they're leaching out on the ground. The tire piles are a real vector problem. I know yesterday you were talking about that, that it wasn't even considered in any of the SEPA's. The leach petroleum, the home for rodents, mosquitoes, bacteria, and disease are a real health threat. I'm asking that the county and Washington DOE to make sure that this facility is completely cleaned up and officially closed immediately. Disclosure needs to happen on this property before the sale because it is and has been taking waste for approximately five to six years. Regarding the taking of garbage at this facility, state law mandated that the permit be filed, filled out, and examined by Ecology. Ecology was to make recommendations. They recommended not allowing the permit to go forward with a great deal of reasoning. Three days later, Mason County Department of Health permitted them anyway. Ecology can be quoted as saying, "Given the acceptance of non-source separated solid waste and lack of compliance with applicable laws, regulations, local ordinances, and failure to the cause and desist order and permit suspension, this facility would never qualify to operate as a solid waste permit exempt site. Acceptance of non-source separated solid waste is never allowed for any permit exempt facility. Additionally, without Wilson demonstrating the ability, willingness, and commitment to meet applicable requirements, Ecology would not allow this facility to operate as a permit exempt operation under any circumstance." That was February 27, 2015. It was Chuck Matthews. The whole process is broken, and we, the public, will pay the price over and over again. So I really recommend that we keep with our own system of doing things, and it needs tweaking. I understand that. We've had some issues right now with recycling in the last week or two with closed places when we go to take it there and that sort of thing. But I think we have a workable situation that's not right now in everyone's backyard. So, thank you.
Thank you. Any questions, Commissioner?
I'm going to give you, this little piece of paper here is about citing also, and just.
I assure you, I've read that one.
You have read this?
Over and over again, yeah.
Okay. And I'll leave this, and like I say, if you want, I can, I don't want to leave my only copy.
No, we'll get a copy from D.C.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for your research. You've spent a lot of time on that, which I appreciate.
Now, in order to save a little time, I need to clarify a few things for everybody. This is not a hearing on whether or not to allow Wilson Recycling to do garbage. First of all, they never applied for a rezone. They never applied for a addition to our comprehensive plan or any of that. The discussion we're having tonight is whether or not to allow for a zone inside the Shelton urban growth area for the handling of garbage, because currently it does not exist. But there were a lot of people, I mean, a lot of people that called us and were mad at us and stuff like that, saying that we closed them down, and we tried to explain to them, "We didn't close anybody down. They could still be there recycling. We just can't allow them to do garbage without going through a process, and there is no zone in that urban growth area to even allow for it." So it would take a full change in our comprehensive plan and a rezone, both of which were never applied for, so that's not what's before us tonight. Tonight, we're taking input on whether or not you think it's a good idea or a bad idea to even have a zone like that in that urban growth area. But we'll take testimony on any of this. It still is valid, everything you said.
Well, my point on that is that when we believe that things are always being handled the way they should and that the state laws are there to protect it, not, it's not always handled correctly. And so to know that that's the possibility, I guess, is my, is my point of why I feel strongly about that.
I agree with you. Is there anybody now who would like to speak in behalf of Wilson Recycling first? Well, it's not, even I jumped to that. On behalf of allowing for a zone like that, please.
My name is Bruce Haskell. I'm a taxpaying citizen, have been a citizen for whatever 20 years of Mason County. We live out on Mickelson Road. My wife here is with me, and we have used, utilized the Wilson Recycling again and again. And we do not pay for the recycling system that's set up for Mason County. We do not want to pay $29 a month and have them do what they do with the recycling. We'd rather do it ourselves and take it and make a little bit of money off of it. And it was a very, very much a convenience for us to have Wilson Recycling close by. We didn't have to go the distance. It's unfortunate hearing that the ordinances were not allowing for that and that they weren't complying with the things that they needed to comply with. But nonetheless, I think that it's important that private enterprise has an opportunity to take hold in this county and bring forth the fruits of dispensing of our trash in ways that are properly mandated. Zoning aquifers, all of that stuff, I understand that's a very big concern, but I hate to see the program of private enterprise dampened by this. The results of it not happening is people don't want to pay to go to the landfill and pay the fees, or they can't pay it, or they're indigent. And they end up out on our road, out on Mickelson Road, and we see the trash heading out, and we call in to the compliance, try to get people out there to monitor that kind of stuff, because they'll dump it out in our backyards of the Mason County. And you can see that going on everywhere when places like Wilson Recycling is shut down. That's all I have to say.
Do you mind if I ask you a question?
Yes, sir.
So are you in favor of creating a zone inside the Shelton urban growth area to allow for that? You know, just, you know, we did have internal battles when it came to the privatization of this and whether to allow for that, but that's not, you know, that's not what happened with them. There's not even a possibility for them.
I understand. I am very much in favor of having a rezoning change.
Okay.
So that it can be within, closer in, so that it's more available to people. That's my.
No, thank you very much, Mr. Haskell. We appreciate it.
You're welcome. Thank you.
One second. Former Commissioner Steve Blumfield.
Thanks, Commissioners, for having us. I appreciate all the people here. Steve Blumfield, Southeast 391, Dominance Road, Shelton. A number of years ago, I believe 2009 or 2010, we had a UGA zoning committee that was set up. I can't remember the exact dates, but feebleness of mind with old age. But what I do remember of it was it was some money that was granted to the city and county to jointly form a task force to investigate zoning in the urban growth area. It was very frustrating for me, as I seen failures in the mapping of the zoning that was, that still exists. Mis-zoned, zoned incorrectly lands that maybe they're zoned industrial, but they will never be industrial, or they're not zoned for proper use. One of the things that we tried to get discussed in that was zoning for privatization or garbage facilities. Another one was wrecking yards. Neither one of those, and I really lay it to the fact that we were doing this under grant with a private company from out of the area. We did not get that either one of those zones completely talked about. We didn't vet it out to where we could come to conclusion whether to really create those zones or identify the areas necessary to put them. The application couldn't happen because we never created it. We never created an opportunity nor even really fully vetted why we didn't create the opportunity. I would love to see that opportunity resurface and investigate those areas. Now, I realize that's money and time, but it was a faux pas on our part, very frustrating for me personally at that time. I thought it was some big glitches in the program. Anyway, a little bit of history, and if there's any way I can help, I certainly would. I think that there's room for this. I certainly don't stand in the way of privatization. In some ways, that's great. But anyway, if I can help, feel free to ask.
I've got a question on that, though. Investigate based on what, on need, on location, on?
Need and location, suitable location. Ms. Thompson raises a very valid point on a car. That's something we need to look at. We've got to be aware of. But we got to, if there is availability of space, I certainly don't want somebody that wants to do it locked out just because we didn't. wants to do it locked out just because we didn't create a space for them, if there is suitable space. We've got to identify it.
Thank you. Any questions, Commissioner? Yeah, I guess the nice stuff you can give to each other, just don't yell at each other. No, just kidding. Yes, please.
My name is Linwood Craft. I live at 200 East Hickam Lane. Prior to the last hearing, I went up and down the road and talked to everybody on the road about garbage, and I got everybody's signature on the petition. I brought it into the office over there, whatever it is, and she said she would put it on the docket. I don't know if you have it or not.
We did. I received it, yes.
I haven't seen it yet, no. If I may.
It was a while ago.
Oh, if I meant today. I've seen this, yes.
It's the signature of everybody that lives on Hickam Lane is against the transportation of city garbage into Wilson Recycling. And I heard the lady before talking about somebody whose well is 56 feet deep, mine's 30 feet deep, and I'm about 500 yards from Wilson Recycling, maybe just outside of the distance to be notified of these things as they happen. But everybody on the road is against the transportation of garbage in there, and so I'm talking against the formation of the new...
New zones, okay.
New zoning. And since you shut the thing down, I've had rats move in to my house. I've trapped seven of them. And, you know, so there's this thing with rats, there's a possible impact to the water, and I don't think they ever got a permit to crush cars. The noise is a concern. Doesn't bother me so much, but it bothers my neighbors. So between the water, the rats, the noise, and everything, everybody on Hickam Lane is against it. And you have that petition there, and I think I've said my case.
Oh, we appreciate it very much. Just to clarify, we didn't close them down. They closed themselves down on recycling. But I've got to admit, I'm a little shocked that we have such shallow wells there by this center. I had a shallow well for many, 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 many years. Matter of fact, my father worked for the PUD, and he dug it with a pole, with a post old ear from the PUD. That's what our well was. And I can tell you, it got tainted there 20 years ago before we put it in an artesian. So I can't even imagine what it would be like to have a 30-foot now by a place that does automobile recycling with oils and stuff. That just seems amazing, but...
Well, I own the piece of property that's right is the start of the Activer Recharge Area, and that's why my well is 30 feet deep.
Yeah.
But the concerns with the water, you know, should take into consideration.
Interesting. Is there anybody else who would like to speak at this time? Yes, please.
Thank you for the opportunity. Rob Rackham, live in the county, and we have the county recycling and garbage system coming to our home. Works very well, except for one thing, it don't take glass. So we had to go to Wilson's. It seemed ludicrous to us that there's a recycle system that doesn't take a major recycle item. And so we ended up going to Wilson's. We probably took some garbage because it was convenient. But the other part, you go out to the dump, you've got to stand in line with your car, sometimes a long time, to just take recycles, just take the glass into the containers. So I think your service works great, but you've got to tweak it. I mean, why do I have to wait, have my car wait to take glass in? That seems ridiculous when I don't have any garbage going to the dump, and why isn't glass picked up at the house? And as far as the direct question you're asked, what do we think about zoning and rezoning in the city, or in the growth area? I'm for that, but only if you don't create situations like this.
Yeah. And just, you know, the recycling aspect, again, was still allowed. It was the garbage that was not.
Right, right. But what I'm trying to point out is the system of coming to our house is not adequate.
Yeah.
And it created the need for me to go to Wilson's.
We'll have further discussions as Commissioner on that. We've talked about it a little bit before, but we'll get into that a little bit deeper on the glass and see what we can do for the citizen out there. Commissioners, any quick comments?
Just to make a comment, Rob, thank you for bringing that up. I've been the Commissioner here the longest of the three, and several years ago, of course, when the recession hit, things got very tough, and we were spending, if I remember right, about $100,000 as a county maintaining the drop boxes, where you're able to drop off your glass, paper, and those things, outside of the collection systems that we have at the Union, the sport belt there and here in Shelton. And so we had to cut back on what we could do. And I think that really relates very much to the first gentleman that spoke tonight about crime, is that we've had to divert some of the money that we would have been spending on some of the nicer things, we have devoted it to the sheriff's office. So maybe as the economy improves, we'll be able to expand our recycling opportunities. At that time, it was a question of money.
Commissioner? Thank you very much, Rob. Appreciate you coming in. Is there anybody else who would like to speak, please? Marilyn Vogler.
Marilyn Vogler, 420 East Poplar. I would like very much to have you pursue finding a zoning area in the urban growth area. I think the problems that have been pointed out with the location where it was, the water problems, the aquifers, the noise, speak to really the strict requirements that you have to meet to locate a facility like this. I think if you can find one in the urban growth area that would be appropriate, it would be really a good idea to zone it for that, so that we have the flexibility in future to expand, whether it's a satellite of the current operator, whether it's a new operator. I know one of the issues with Wilson's not being available for solid waste and recycling is the amount of driving the city trucks have to do. The city was saving, I think, considerable amount of money being able to transport recycling to a closer location. And so when you consider all costs involved, being able to locate a site in some facility in the future at somewhere convenient location for perhaps the rest of the county, I think would be a good idea. And anytime you can build flexibility into your system, I think it's a good thing. So yes, I encourage you to pursue it. Thanks.
Thank you, Marilyn. Yes, please. It was you.
Chris Brochet, 121 East Fairfield. And I'm going to let everybody know how naive I can be, but listening to everybody and all the different ideas, is there not a way that at the landfill, we can't have it set up, an area set up like Wilson Recycling, so that people don't have to wait in line for the garbage cans, that they can go for the recycling? And I guess I'm curious, have any of you, did any of you go to Wilson Recycling?
Yes, I've been there many times.
Okay. For one thing, for one thing, it was, at least when I was there, it didn't smell. There wasn't the bees and stuff. And I think what worked best, and especially for my mom and things, is that people would help her unload her garbage and things, and it was really convenient for the recycling and stuff. So for that convenience, plus not having to pay, because the alternative is to pay for the monthly, you know, come to your house, and when you only have one small sack of garbage a week, it's really not cost effective, you know, effective to have that either. So if we could have another alternative, and I'm thinking with the employees that were at Wilson's and that know it, and if I read, if the newspaper was correct, they made $250 a day just on the recycling, and/or if they could lease a part, you know, there at the landfill from the county. I mean, I don't, my head is spinning about all the ideas, but from what I've heard is that, yes, we need a alternative. We need something that's going to be open every day of the week for convenience for the people. And if we have the helpful helpers like, that can help you unload and different things, we wouldn't have to worry about additional permitting and things. We wouldn't have to worry about aquifers and things. We kind of have a lot of the nitty-gritty stuff, you know, already had been happening, just needs to be tweaked a little bit. And perhaps Mason County can lead the way as being, creating a type of program that others all over will want to follow. Because if it was done correctly and on the premises that we already have, you know, it wouldn't have to cost a lot more, and certainly not $100,000 a year like we, you know, had done with the drop boxes, which of course had their problems too. So what I'm really hoping is that maybe something like this can be set up, and what I, to reiterate what has been said, is not to lock it in like some communities have, that your only option is to have house pickup, and that's it. And because that is just, well, besides thinking it's not right, it's just not, really places a burden on a lot of people for a lot of different reasons. So, thank you.
Just to clarify again, the recycling was still allowed. That's not an issue. The garbage is what became the problem, what we couldn't allow without creating another zone.
Yeah, but if I understood the paper right, just having the recycling wasn't cost-effective enough or didn't bring in...
Wasn't profitable enough for them.
And since we already have to sort kind of through it, I mean, I don't know how much sorting is done, but if it's already being transported to Chehalis, and if we had an option for some, whether it's just the private people, I mean, I'm sure Mason County Garbage doesn't want to, you know, dump that, but I mean, maybe it'd be productive. I don't know. But it just seems like there could be a real win-win situation here, and I encourage you to look into that.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Chairman?
No, please hold.
Mr. Chairman, can I just make a comment?
Yes.
Chris, thank you for your comments. I haven't been to, I misspoke. I have not been to Wilson many times, but I've been to them in the last year, I'd say four times, maybe in the last three years. And the reason I go there is that I live in Potlatch, as you know, and it was the site of an old logging camp. And on our property, grandpa had a lot of stuff. When the logging camp, and it was one of the largest logging camps in Washington State. We had four of the biggest in 1900, right here in Mason County. So still in our property, there's a lot of metal, and this is rusted cables, boilers from the steam donkeys, a lot of junk and heavy, heavy bolts. So I've got a 16-foot trailer, flatbed trailer, and a small excavator. I load that trailer, I'll go to Wilson, and I used to get a couple hundred dollars for that metal. I loaded it, this was in the spring, I went to there, and I think I got paid either a penny and three-quarters per pound or a three-quarters cents per pound. It did not pay my fuel to get there. So a lot of this discussion is all about the economics of metal and recyclables. It is very, the price has just tanked. So it's very difficult to put together a business model that makes sense, that wouldn't be just totally subsidized either by the county or the price would be so high, people would not recycle. So it's driven by economics, you know, and just, and lastly, take a look at Oregon. You know, they have a five-cent deposit on bottles in Wilson. Some of that kind of thing does promote recycling, that we might be able to do with this paper too. So there's some alternatives.
And now, before you do, I need to allow the people to have their comments first. With that being said, is there anybody else who would like to speak at this time on either side of the issue? Please.
Hi, Deborah Sofer. I live in Springwood, and I just wanted to say that I have serious reservations about amending land use zoning, because homeowners buy and build based upon the existing zoning, and it's really disturbing to think that the zoning could be changed and might create a situation or environment that would be detrimental to existing homeowners.
Thank you. Yes, please.
Hi, I'm Ronald Martin. I'm one of the last of the Hickams on Hickam Lane there. I've lived over there 25 years, and we have not seen one rat until Wilson started putting their garbage on there. Fact is also that the smell, the seagulls and everything else, you know, I don't have nothing against them having their business, but to put it right next to our wells and everything, come on, you know, come on. And also, as far as the recycling part, there have been many times for years I took paper up to Wilson. They were glad to take it. Now they want us to pay them, to pay the amount of paper. Well, that's yes. You know, we're trying to recycle, you know, and what's he want to do? He wants to line his pockets with our recycling that we're giving? That's not proper. Also, the fact that is, everybody on my driveway has started getting rats. I want to emphasize this many times, we're getting rats down there, even though they had the short amount of time there. I mean, it's going to go from one thing to the next. We have recyclers up there. I have people coming up on my driveway, in our driveway, with their little trailers looking for any metal and stuff. You know, I've got a couple of old cars out there that I restore cars. I've got parts missing off of them now, okay? If you want to go to a recycler, there's many of them here in Mason County. Besides, the best paying is down at South Sound. So if you want the best buck, go to South Sound. Don't put it in my yard. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who would like to testify at this time? Anybody else? Now you can ask your question.
In listening to Cindy...
Please, no, you need to direct it to me. I'm sorry. You can't direct any of it to the audience.
As listening to Cindy and her comments about the courtesy that took place at Wilson's and helping the elderly unload their trash, and I've experienced that myself, I think that her suggestion of having the recycle bins available at the landfill will help a lot in not having to go through the waste station. And maybe, just maybe, you could figure out a way to use the court-ordered community service people to give that courtesy back to the people in helping out with the recycling.
Thank you very much. Is there anybody else who would like to testify at this time? Nobody else? Commissioners, do you like to make any comments now?
I would. I think that it should be emphasized that, yes, recycling materials is a commodity, and that market has tanked. Apparently, I've heard that you can't even find a buyer for glass. So, you know, that might have been a business decision of why we don't do picking up of glass. It is inconvenient, and it does cost the county a lot of money to haul away the glass that does get left at our own solid waste facility. So, you know, as much as we all have gotten into the habit of doing it, and now we can't hardly find anybody to take it, let alone process it. So, you know, there's some bigger changes that need to happen to make recycling a viable option all around. I really like the idea of finding a different way to bring in your recycled goods to our current solid waste facility outside the, going through the scales, and I'm going to ask our staff to kind of explain how that may or may not be able to happen. I thank everybody for coming out and providing your opinions, and for the folks on Hickam Lane, my sympathies, that you're having to deal with that close-down issues. And, yeah, we'll definitely take this back and discuss it... it among ourselves and what we heard. Thank you.
I have one more comment.
No, I'm sorry. We're into the Commissioners' discussion. I'm sorry. Please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And we can speak after, perhaps, after the meeting. I think our contractors, Mason County Garbage, does an excellent job with the recycling that they perform for the county. And Republic is our waste hauling. They haul it, as I said, by truck and then by rail to Quickenback County. We've never had, in my knowledge, a kind of a security thing where somebody says, well, my garbage ended up, and then I got somebody's ID out of the garbage. Not that I've heard. You know, that's an important thing for people to make sure that their records, if they dump them in the garbage, that it doesn't show up on someplace in India where somebody's tapping into, or I wouldn't say it's India, but tapping into your credit card or your account. So I think that's a very positive thing. And the last thing I'll mention, zoning is a very contentious issue. So if you remember back into the early 1990s, when the Growth Management Act was passed, we needed a comprehensive plan. And there was a lot of discussion, a lot of people, huge meetings, but we had to give big calls to meet and talk about the comprehensive plan because it was such a contentious issue. And we ended up with zoning, which is very different than the zoning model that other communities have. So we zone for what you can do on your property. There's this long matrix. So you go across the top, what's your property, down the bottom, what can you do? That is much different than other counties or cities or wherever, traditional zoning, that just says what you can't do, what you cannot do. And having that system is probably much simpler. That's why they even, people have adopted that. So you say, well, you can't have a, you can't collect garbage in that area. You can't have an industry. You can't have more than two cars on that piece of property. So we created this, and maybe someday we'll be able to simplify it. But I think it is still burdensome and complicated for the average citizen to understand. Thank you.
You know, we had some battles originally about privatization of it, private enterprise and stuff. And, you know, I really pushed on that. But then we ran into some other issues that have nothing to do with any of that. And that is, can and cannot be done, and should it be able to be done. You know, I want to hit a couple of issues on the glass. We looked into it because of some issues before at the port and dealing with recycling. And you'll find that the glass is actually taken to the dumps and dumped into the dumps, irregardless where it's recycled, because there's no money there for it. So it ends up being, it ends up being a cost that it takes to actually move from one to another. We just went out for our contract for our recycling, and they came back a lot more expensive because now they don't have the money that they make off it, so it costs more to ship it. If we were to create an entity where we're sitting there and allowing people to drop it off, I want to look at it, but I'm just telling you, being realistic, counties work a little different than some of the private enterprise. First of all, we're going to have unions involved. We're going to have other costs. It's not going to be as cheap. And there's certain things you can't do as a county that'd be gifting the funds. And if it literally takes money to take that for free, then we have an issue that we have to discuss. One thing I want to point out is, irregardless of how we felt and how we discussed some of these things in the beginning, it is completely obvious to me after today, though, there's no way this would have passed through the Planning Commission. You know, if these neighbors were notified and they had showed up, I've served on the Planning Commission up until the time I was here. Commissioner Jeffries did as well. I have a real hard time seeing anybody be able to overcome that with a group of citizens that are looking at that and hearing about the wells that are right next to it, hearing about the animals and the issues. I don't think it would ever made it past that stage, let alone get to the commission. With that being said, so I'm glad we've had this discussion, because a lot of the stuff we talked about, to be honest, I had no idea. I just knew the private enterprise aspect and trying to support private enterprise. But there's obviously a lot more to it, and that's why these laws are in place. That's why you have to have public hearings before you have a rezone or change a comprehensive plan. Sometimes the law is a good thing, and it's put there to protect somebody with a well that's 30 feet deep, just off of one of these places that are dismantling cars. With that being said, is there anything further, Commissioners, before we move into the next item? Then we're going to go ahead and close the public input session of whether or not to consider land use and zoning expansions for solid waste. And we're going to move in...